On behalf of Borough President Vanessa L. Gibson, I am pleased to welcome you to this public hearing. It's being held today, Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, at 10:18 a.m. in A51 Grand Concourse, Room 711, as well as virtually through WebEx. I'll turn it over to Bronx Borough President Vanessa Gibson to welcome you all today.
Thank you, Jitan, and thank you, Sam, from our team, from the Office of the Bronx Borough President, our planning and development team. Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for joining us. I am Bronx Borough President Vanessa L. Gibson. I thank you all for being here this morning, those of you who are here to testify and provide your input on the Metro North Station Area Study Proposal before the City of New York that has already gone through the public review process and is still underway. I want to thank the members of the public for joining us here in person at A51 Grand Concourse at Bronx Borough Hall, as well as those who are online, virtually, joining us as well. Everyone's voice is truly important because this is a part of our fundamental goals as a democracy, to ensure that all Bronxites have a voice, that they feel heard, and they feel engaged in this process. I'm thankful that we have an opportunity this morning to hear from the New York City Department of City Planning. I want to recognize our Chair, Dan Garodnik, who oversees the City Planning Agency at our city level, working with our Bronx Director, Paul Phillips, and his team at DCP's Bronx Office. This is an opportunity to understand the Metro North Area Station Study and many of the related actions. This is truly a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that will dramatically increase access for us in the Bronx, in the City of New York, and beyond. Since the launch of the Bronx Metro North Station Area Study back in 2018, city agencies, residents, advocates, institutions, faith leaders, clergy leaders, non-for-profit organizations, elected officials, and many other stakeholders have truly been engaged in this process to ensure that public transit provides equity, fairness, and justice, that it supports our residents, our commuters, by offering them not only transportation, but really a gateway to employment opportunities, potential housing, other amenities, and more. Last year, in coordination with the New York City Council and the council members that represent the areas of the four proposed Metro North stations, our New York City Majority Leader, Amanda Farias, council member Marjorie Velasquez, who did represent District 13, our new council member of District 13, council member Kristi Marmarado, council member Kevin Riley, and council member Rafael Salamanca Jr. Our office cosponsored with our council members and the MTA and the Department of City Planning, five public information sessions that were all in person in the Co-op City community, in the Hunts Point community, in the Morris Park community, as well as the Parkchester-Van Ness community. In addition, we held several virtual workshops online for members of the public to engage, to share ideas and concerns, as well as offer questions regarding the proposed expansion of the Metro North stations with access to Penn Station. We believe and know that implementing transit-oriented development stations will really attract both public investment and private investment in future housing opportunities, supporting small businesses and entrepreneurs, bringing much-needed necessities and services to our borough, and really strengthen critical job sectors to support our borough and our cities' economic growth. This new Metro North Line station will also address the shortcomings of many of our communities that are often defined as transit deserts in the East Bronx, while simultaneously granting our residents access to new jobs, employment opportunities, reducing our carbon footprint when it comes to vehicles on our roads, as well as the burden of commute times will also be addressed. I want everyone to understand and know that the Metro North Expansion Project really has an opportunity to reshape transit equity in our borough. We want to hear from all of you as it relates to your ideas, your concerns, and we know that any time there is a new proposal on the table, there is always going to be concern. No proposal, no project is ever perfect. That's why we have a public review process where members of the public can come and engage with elected officials and decision-makers and stakeholders and share ideas. Our goal with every project, every proposal that comes to our office is to add value to our incredible neighborhoods already. We want to make sure that residents have options and choices and alternatives. It is unacceptable in this borough that we face some of the highest rates of asthma and heart disease and obesity. It is not acceptable that out of 62 counties in this state, the Bronx is number 62 when it comes to healthy outcomes. We will not accept these statistics, and we will not accept this data when it comes to our outcomes. But what we will do is look at creative and innovative approaches that identify equity and fairness and opportunities and alternatives so that residents have choices. We want to make sure that we reduce our carbon footprint. We look at renewable energy. We look at new opportunities that bring diversity, that bring options for residents, for families, for children, for older adults, for individuals with disabilities and mobility issues. We must do better in this borough. So I'm grateful that we even have this opportunity to weigh in on such a proposal as the Metro North Expansion. We're talking about reducing commute times by 50% when it comes to access to Penn Station. And we know that this also will serve as a connector for our colleagues in Westchester County, as well as other parts of our state in the East Bronx. So this is something that we've been working closely with all of our council members, talking closely to the stakeholders in Co-op City, obviously Section 5 being the community that will have the most impact, the community in Hunts Point down in Community Board 2, also in the Parkchester-Van Ness community in Community Board 9, as well as Morris Park in Community Board 11. So now that the process is in our office, I do want to acknowledge the work of our local community boards, Community Board 2, Community Board 9, Community Board 10, and Community Board 11. I think we all understand and recognize that these are opportunities that we do not want to pass up, but it's our responsibility to reshape and make these proposals better. That's what the public review process is all about. So this morning, we are going to hear from the New York City Department of City Planning, and I want to thank DCP for hosting all of our workshops and informational, talking to all of our community board members and other stakeholders that are interested in this project. I'm looking forward to seeing this project come together with all of your input. This is a collaboration. This is a partnership, and we're going to do this project together. So I thank you all for joining us this morning, and certainly want to thank our team at the Office of the Bronx Borough President, our Deputy Borough President, Janet Bagado, as well as my Director of Planning, Jitan Hortsman, Sam Goodman, Jayden Vasquez, Kimberly McNabb, and everyone that works in our planning division. This is one project of several that we are working on today, but we are excited and look forward to the work ahead. And once again, thank you all for joining us in person and those online. We look forward to today's conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Borough President. So I'll now go over the run of show and set some of the ground rules for the public hearing. For the public hearing, the applicant will make an initial, the applicant team will make an initial presentation. The Borough President's team will then ask questions to the applicant team. Any elected officials that are present may then offer testimony. Statements from the general public will begin in the order they were received. There's a two-minute time limit which will be enforced. The applicant team will not respond to questions after individual speakers. The speakers will be both in-person and virtual. To speak in-person, you'll need to fill out a speaker card available at the sign-in table when you first arrived. Please make sure that they also receive your signing cards. To speak virtually, you'll need to use the Raise Your Hand function, which will put you in the queue to speak. You may do that now if you haven't already. If you are on a phone, you can press *9 to raise your hand and *6 to mute and unmute. Please only unmute yourself if you have been recognized to speak. Speakers may only speak once. We ask that there are no interruptions from the audience during the public testimony, and that each person's opinions are respected. We ask, we will ask people to leave if they are disruptive during the public hearing. This includes written comments in the chat or any disrespectful statements. This is a public hearing that is being recorded. For any written testimony, please submit it to publictestimony@bronxbp.nyc.gov. That information is also on the website. Written testimony will always be accepted, but only the testimony received by Friday, April 19th, will be considered for the Borough President's recommendation. I'll now turn it over to Sam Goodman, who will go over the docket and will be keeping time.
Thank you, Jitan. My name is Sam Goodman. I am the ULP Coordinator for Bronx Borough President Vanessa L. Gibson, and on behalf of the Borough President, I welcome you to this public hearing. I'm also going to be the timekeeper, the keeper of the bell. When the two-minute warning is coming up, I'll ring the bell that advises you to please conclude your statement. So now I'm going to read the docket descriptions in an abbreviated manner so as to maximize the time efficiency of our hearing. If you wish to, if you wish the full docket description, that full docket description is available on the Borough President's webpage. Application number C240015ZMX for a zoning map amendment and application N240016ZRX for a zoning text amendment for the Bronx Metro North Station Stud Area Study. Application number C240163MMX Bronx Metro North Bronxdale Mapping for a City Map Amendment. Application number 240158MMX Bronx Metro North Marconi Street Widening for a City Map Amendment. Application number 240159MMX Bronx Metro North Morris Park Plaza Mapping for a City Map Amendment. Application number 240157MMX Bronx Metro North Union Port Road Demapping for a City Map Amendment. And finally, application number C240160MMX Bronx Metro North Marconi Street Bridge for a City Map Amendment. Those are the applications this public hearing will be addressing this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. We'll now turn it over to the Department of City Planning to, for their presentation.
Good morning. My name is Paul Phillips. I am the Borough Director at the Bronx Office of Department of City Planning. I am joined today by Michael Cavalar, who is a Senior Team Leader and the Project Manager for the Bronx Metro North Study. We want to thank the Borough President Vanessa Gibson and her staff for the opportunity to present the Bronx Metro North Neighborhood Plan today. I just want to note a few things. As the Borough President said, this is an opportunity for us to continue to hear from the public. I want to thank the community boards for their very thoughtful input that we have already received, and this is not the end of the process. The process will continue, and we want to continue to hear from folks as we go through this process to continue to shape the proposal. And with that, I will turn it over to Michael Cavalar, who will walk you through the presentation.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. So, good morning. We're excited to present today an overview of the Bronx Metro North Neighborhood Plan and the series of land use actions that Sam laid out that are the subject of today's hearing. Next slide, please. We'd like to first share a little background on the study and outreach over the years. We'll then step through existing conditions and the proposed actions in detail. This will be followed by a summary of our public realm planning work and a series of associated city map actions before concluding with an overview of our parallel workforce development planning and the studies' associated environmental review. I just want to note quickly that this will be a slightly abbreviated version of the presentation. The full presentation from the review session is available on DCP's website and YouTube channel. Next slide, please. So today, the East Bronx lacks regional rail service. Next slide. Tomorrow, new rail service will mean greater accessibility to the city and the region. This means more choices for where Bronxites may choose to work, live, and enjoy themselves, as well as significantly improved connections from the region to critical medical, research, and job institutions within the borough. Next. New service also represents a unique opportunity to plan together, to thoughtfully integrate these new stations into the fabric of the communities they'll serve. Over the past six years, the Department of City Planning has worked with the MTA, community members, area institutions, the Bronx Borough President's Office, and many others to envision what it might mean to grow thoughtfully around this new service. Next. This work is included developing a joint vision for what it means to create new front doors to the Bronx communities and a world-class entry point to one of the city's most important job centers. Next. It also means strengthening job centers by allowing them to grow while also allowing for the growth of housing and retail needed for the success and growth of our Bronx employers. Next. It means mending seams between communities created by a history of inadequate public infrastructure and facilities. Next. As well as allowing for a mix of housing and retail near new rail service in areas of the borough that have seen little such growth over the years. Next slide, please. The four stations span areas that are demographically, geographically, and structurally quite diverse. As such, planning work over the years has taken a station-by-station approach. Importantly, while planning work has and will continue to proceed around all four stations, the land use actions contemplated today relate specifically to facilitating a series of proposed land use actions at the Parkchester-Van Ness and Morris Park station areas. Next. These areas span three Bronx community districts, Districts 9, 10, and 11, and will facilitate the development of some 7,500 units of new housing, including up to 2,000 units of permanently income-restricted housing in an area of the city that has seen little such growth. They will also support the growth of some 2.5 million square feet of commercial and community facility uses, and are estimated to create some 10,000 jobs. Next slide, please. These actions consist of a series of zoning map, zoning text, and city map amendments that together aim to promote the growth of housing and retail, strengthen job centers, and promote industries of the future, and create an improved public realm. Officially launched in July 2018, the study has spanned nearly six years of sustained outreach and coordination via a variety of engagement techniques designed to ensure a wide array of stakeholders had input into the plan. That's before the Borough President today. Next. This has included working group meetings, in-person workshops, open houses, institutional convenings, remote open houses, workshops, informational sessions, remote office hours, and much more. Outreach over the years has also necessarily included a range of stakeholders from neighborhood organizations to educational and medical institutions and many more. Next. And of course, a large planning initiative like Bronx Metro North necessitates coordination with a vast array of city, state, and even federal agencies, from the NYC Department of Transportation to the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce Development to the MTA and Amtrak. This important coordination will continue for years to come. Next slide, please. So we'll start just by going through some of the existing conditions around the two station areas where the land use actions are proposed, and then we'll step through the details of those proposals, starting here with Parkchester-Van Ness. Next slide, please. Land use at Parkchester-Van Ness is characterized by a mix of industrial, retail, and automotive uses near the planned station, with a mix of mid- and low-density residential districts characterizing the areas to the north and south of East Tremont Ave, as well as the eastern extreme of the proposed rezoning area. Next. Zoning today consists principally of M11 and C8 districts, as well as small portions of R4 and R5 zoning districts within the affected area, with R4 through R6 districts dominating beyond. Next. The study is generally well served by transit, study areas generally well served by transit with subway service available within one mile via the 25 train at 180th Street or via the 6 train south of Parkchester. Numerous bus lines also traverse East Tremont Ave, as well as Westchester Ave, Morris Park Ave, Bronxdale Ave, White Plains Road, and Union Port Road. Next. And here you can see a selection of some of the existing conditions along East Tremont Ave as well as Bronxdale Ave. Next slide, please. Okay, so we'll go quickly now through Morris Park. Next. Land uses here are characterized by the predominance of large institutional campuses concentrated to the east and west of the future station. Within the affected areas are a number of lower-scale industrial, commercial, and automotive uses. Nearby areas beyond the institutional campuses and north and south of the affected area include residential and commercial uses. Next. Zoning within the affected area largely consists of M11 industrial districts with a mix of commercial and low-to-mid-density residential districts west of the medical campuses and east of the Hutchinson River Parkway. Next. Transit in the area is characterized by bus service running along the major corridors of Morris Park Ave, East Chester Road, and East Tremont Ave, and nearby subway service can be found approximately one mile to the south and southeast of the station via the 6 train. I think it jumped a slide. There was a selection of images on the previous slide of the conditions around Morris Park. There we go. So we can see some of the conditions here along East Chester Road, Waters Place, Basset Avenue, and then the lower left-hand image roughly of you someone would have getting off of the train in the future. Next slide, please. And so with the context in mind, we'll now move on to the proposal. Next slide. Guiding our work have been a number of principles established over the years. Generally, these include leveraging new service for the creation of housing near new transit, strengthening just existing job centers and corridors, encouraging uses and development compatible with transit-oriented development, and increasing density on major streets, large sites, and at new transit stations. Next slide, please. To this end, DCP proposes a series of zoning map, zoning text, and city map amendments, and we'll now step through those individually. Next slide. We'll start with our zoning map amendments. Next. To structure the city's thinking around the new station areas, we've developed seven distinct subareas. I will step through these one at a time. These areas include the station-adjacent subarea at Morris Park, transitional residential subareas meant to respond to surrounding lower-density neighborhoods, transitional mixed-use areas, high-density residential subareas near the future Parkchester-Van Ness station, station-adjacent retail areas, automotive subareas, and one large opportunity site at 1601 Bronxdale Avenue. Next slide, please. Beginning with the station-adjacent area at Morris Park, this area is located next to the future train station where we look to create density, to capitalize on the new transit service, allowing for the growth of the existing job center and creating new housing opportunities. The existing zoning districts are listed at the top of the slides in this section. As you can see, most of the rezoning area is today mapped with low-density districts where little or no new residential development is permitted today. Next slide. The higher densities that would be permitted around the Morris Park train station where we propose a C44 district with an R8 residential equivalent. Through the special-purpose district, we propose increasing both the permitted commercial and residential FARs compared to what you would otherwise see in a C44 district. In the tables shown on these slides, you'll see bulk and density regulations as proposed, including any modifications per our proposed special district. Later in the presentation, we'll quickly touch upon these specific modifications. Here in the images, you can see a sense of the type and scale that would be enabled by, by the changes proposed at Morris Park. Next slide, please. Next, we'll discuss the mixed-use transitional areas. To help grow Morris Park as a job center, we are proposing C4 districts for this subarea, which consists of areas further away from the future train station that are currently occupied by commercial and community facility uses, mostly focused around health care. Next slide. Similar to the station-adjacent subarea, we're proposing to increase the commercial FAR through the special-purpose district to promote new commercial uses. Here you can see an illustration of the potential type of, type and scale of future development on sites near the Jacobian Montefiore Health campuses and near the existing job center at the Hutchinson Metro Center. Next slide, please. Our next district is, sub-district is the neighborhood commercial. The neighborhood commercial subarea is located on the Montefiore Einstein Medical Campus. Our actions here are meant simply to facilitate and improve pedestrian connections between the Morris Park neighborhood to the west, the existing health campuses, and the future station. Next slide, please. Similar to key commercial corridors elsewhere in the project area, we propose a C24 overlay here as the existing large-scale community facility development plan on the campus does not allow for commercial uses today, such as neighborhood-serving retail. And here again on the right, you can see some examples of the potential type and scale of future development on this important intersection of commercial corridors near the future Morris Park station, and how it would benefit from having neighborhood-serving commercial uses. Next slide, please. Our next sub-district are transitional residential areas. These, this subarea is meant to provide a transition between higher densities closer to the stations and adjacent lower-scale residential neighborhoods. This subarea centers around key corridors such as East Tremont Avenue and East Chester Road. Next slide, please. We are proposing to map mid-density residential districts along these corridors to provide that transition and respond to the existing context. C24 overlays are proposed along the corridor frontages. Next slide, please. And here you can see the, an example of the potential size and scale of future development that you might see in these areas along East Tremont Ave and how it relates to the existing context. Next slide, please. Our next subarea is high-density residential. The subarea is centered around the future Parkchester-Van Ness station and the large opportunity sites there, again in an effort to create density closest to the future stations. Next slide, please. As is true for all proposed residential and mixed-use commercial districts, a portion of all future housing units would be required to be affordable. Oh, I apologize. A mapping action, sorry. A mapping action is, pursues together with a property owner. I'm very sorry. These slides got a little mixed up. Okay, I'm back on. Okay. As is true for all proposed residential and mixed-use commercial districts, a portion of all future housing units would be required to be affordable per MIH. In response to the built form of the Parkchester Special Plan Community, the proposed R8X district would ensure a maximum building height that fits well within that context. Next slide, please. And just an important note on Parkchester and the associated text amendments that are part of the proposal. The department proposes modifying the boundaries of the special, Parkchester Special Plan Community Preservation District to facilitate residential development and allow active uses to be built here to better connect Parkchester with the new station and provide for more activity across from the station on East Tremont Ave. The proportion proposed to be removed from the special district is different from the rest of the character of Parkchester in terms of its used zoning and built form, and no new development is currently allowed here under the special district. This area would simultaneously be added to the proposed special East Chester/East Tremont Corridor District. Next slide, please. And now just quickly on the special site, that is the Bronxdale site. Due to its proximity to one of the future train stations, its size, and the potential to create open space and pedestrian access, the proposed actions here have a tailored approach. Next slide, please. We are proposing a paired M11, M11A/R73 district to provide flexibility for existing industrial uses while allowing for mid-density and mixed-use residential development over the long term. A mapping action is also proposed together with property owner to create a connection between the surrounding neighborhood and the future station while also setting aside space for publicly accessible open spaces on this large site. Here we would map the M11A district that the zoning-for-economic opportunity proposal, part of the citywide City of Yes proposals, which is currently in public review, envisions. Here you can see on the lower right-hand side, the potential type and scale of future development close to the future Metro North station, as well as the proposed open spaces and public realm improvements that would be facilitated by the associated mapping action. Next slide, please. And then finally, on our automotive commercial district subarea, this area runs along a stretch of East Tremont Ave now dominated by auto-oriented uses and characterized by small, shallow lots abutting the rail line. Next slide. A C82 district is proposed here to allow existing auto uses to continue as of right while also creating opportunities for other commercial uses such as retail that commuters and residents could patronize. And then here again, you can see the potential type and scale of future development on these sites abutting the rail line where we would allow new developments to waive rear-yard requirements to be better able to utilize these small, hard-to-develop lots. Next slide, please. So here you can see how that proposal altogether translates into a comprehensive set of zoning changes. Together, we believe these changes will help facilitate the development of vibrant mixed-use districts centered around new transit access in a way that is both respectful of the existing context while also providing opportunities for growth presented by the unique and historic opportunity support new rail service presented to us. So now we'll shift to focus on our proposed zoning text amendments. Next slide. The department proposes the following zoning text amendments: establishment of the special East Chester/East Tremont Corridor District, the establishment of the R61 and M11A districts, the application and mapping of mandatory inclusionary housing, the extension of the transit zone, and the removal of language that exclusively applies to C84 special districts within special plan community preservation districts in the city. Next slide, please. We'd like to begin by discussing the special East Chester/East Tremont Corridor District and its components, which seek to promote growth of housing and employment centers around transit, foster an adequate range of services and amenities for residents, workers, and visitors, ensure a lively and attractive urban streetscape around the stations and along major corridors, and create a cohesive pedestrian and public realm network that would better connect future developments with future station areas and surrounding neighborhoods. Some special district elements are reflective of what is already contemplated in two proposed citywide text amendments: City of Yes for Economic Opportunity, which is now in public review, and our City of Yes review, and our City of Yes for Housing Opportunity, which is also entering soon public review to be introduced soon. This neighborhood plan complements the two proposed text amendments as a proposal will support the growth of job centers and strengthen existing commercial corridors, and also seeks to grow housing around new transit in areas where new housing is often not allowed under current zoning. We've proposed several special district provisions to facilitate and support residential growth around new transit. Next slide, please. Another set of provisions seeks to encourage the creation of a lively public realm and create a cohesive and active urban streetscape connecting future developments with the future stations and surrounding neighborhoods. You're already familiar with some of these provisions as they are part of the zoning-for-economic opportunity proposal. Next slide, please. We also seek to grow existing job centers. A third and last set of provisions is focused on this specifically at the Morris Park station area. And next slide, please. And then finally, in an area of the city that has seen very little in the way of mandatory inclusionary housing areas mapped since its inception nearly a decade ago, and very few affordable units produced overall, the Bronx Metro North Plan proposes the largest mapping of mandatory inclusionary housing since the Jerome Study in 2018. Next slide, please. To complement the MTA's work and our own proposed land use actions, the Department of City Planning and the city also propose a series of potential public realm improvements around each of the station areas. Next slide, please. At Morris Park, proposed improvements range from new open space to roadway improvements to a proposed new signature plaza for the Morris Park Job Center. Three of these proposed improvements are the subject of specific mapping actions under consideration as part of this hearing. Together with proposed city map, zoning map, and zoning text amendments, the Department of City Planning envisions the transformation of the area into a mixed-use gateway and much-needed public amenity for those who live, work, or will choose to visit the Morris Park station area by train or otherwise. Next slide, please. Similarly, at Parkchester Van Ness, the city also proposes a series of potential public realm improvements. Next slide, please. This ranges from improvements to existing open spaces to critical pedestrian improvements to incentives for an expanded public realm. Up for public review as part of this hearing are two mapping actions intended to facilitate aspects of this work. In the future, together with proposed city map, zoning map, and zoning text amendments, DCP envisions the transformation of East Tremont Avenue into a unifying seam between communities to the north and south. This vision includes expanded open space, improved sidewalk and crosswalk conditions, as well as a more active mix of uses along this important corridor in your new transit service. Next slide, please. Now a few words on the city's parallel workforce development and jobs planning work. Next slide, please. If we step back a moment to be the larger regional context, we can see that these new stations connect to a line that is home to as many private sector jobs as roughly the city of St. Louis. Notably, the line has also developed as a sort of life sciences corridor stretching from New Haven all the way to Midtown Manhattan. Indeed, the city believes that Morris Park has an important role to play in this growing industry and along this key regional corridor. Next. Zooming in, we can see that Morris Park, together with Hunts Point, is already one of the city's 10 largest job centers. New service together with proposed land use actions will ensure these centers are more tightly integrated into the borough, the city, and the region than ever before. Next slide. Today Morris Park is already home to a large array of medical and research institutions, as well as large commercial campuses. Altoled, the center adds up to some 3,000 students, 300-plus medical offices, and some 23,000 jobs. Next slide. To ensure that we are thinking thoughtfully about what these opportunities mean for Bronxites, DCP has undertaken a study under the guidance of the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce Development to bring forth a plan that not only helps these institutions to grow but identifies pathways for connecting Bronxites to job opportunities in the area and in key industries. The result of this work will be a series of recommendations that we look forward to sharing with the public later this year. Next slide, please. Finally, we'd like to note for the Borough President's Office and others, an exciting opportunity to locate a STEM school within the Morris Park Job Center with a focus on healthcare and life sciences. We look forward to continuing to support New York City schools as it seeks to find the right home for such a center and believe it will play an important role in connecting young Bronxites to these important and growing industries. Next slide, please. Okay. And just to note that, like any series of land use actions proposed by the city, this study also has had a full environmental analysis. There will be a final environmental analysis issued later this year. For details on that, you can go to our website. You could watch for a little bit more detail on that, our initial presentation to the commission, just for the sake of brevity, though. We're going to abbreviate that now, so we could go on to the next slide, please. Okay. And so with that, we'd just like to thank you for your time today. And I'm sorry, there's one more slide after the slide that says summary slide. Thank you. So just to summarize the actions today, we have zoning text, zoning map, and city map amendments in Bronx community districts nine, 10, and 11 intended to facilitate the growth of housing, retail, and office uses near new transit. This includes up to 7,500 new housing units, as well as up to 2,000 permanently income-restricted units in an area of the city that has seen little such growth, as well as up to 2.5 million square feet of commercial and community facility development, 10,000 jobs, and a series of public realm improvements. These actions taken together will help to ensure that the future stations are thoughtfully integrated into the fabric of the communities they'll serve, that longstanding gaps in housing production, including affordable housing near the station areas, are addressed, that institutions and employers are poised for growth and success, and that Bronxites are well-positioned to take advantage of these opportunities. Next slide, please. And just to note, we're with where we are in the public process today, so we certified the project at the end of January this year. The community boards have completed their public review process and have issued their recommendations, and so now we're here today with the Borough President's Office for their hearing, and we'll hand it back off.
Thank you, Michael, Paul, and City Planning Team. I'm actually going to continue with the City Planning Team because we have City Planning Chair Dan Garotnick on. Dan, if you would like to unmute yourself to speak? All right, Dan, I believe that you are available to speak.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Well, thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to join you, Madam President. Good to see you as always. I am Dan Garotnick, Director of the Bronx City Planning. I wanted to just take a moment and thank you all for giving us the opportunity to present on the Bronx and our neighborhood plan and just say a few quick words about why it's so important. As you just heard from our team, this plan offers as even once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to complement the new East Bronx Metro North stations with neighborhood investments that are transformational in scope. 7,000 new transit-enabled homes, including permanently affordable income-restricted housing, 10,000 new jobs, bolster key community commercial cars, new workforce training programs, enhanced infrastructure and public amenities, and supportive community institutions and job centers like Jacoby Medical Center, Montefiore Hospital, Calgary Hospital, and Hutchinson Metro Center. Morris Park and Hunts Point are already two of the 10 largest job centers in New York City, and this plan will allow them to be thriving into the future. And all this around new train stations that connect residents to jobs across the city and towards Westchester and Manhattan. All in all, a really comprehensive plan for a bright future here in East Bronx. The plan, which is wrapped, as you all know, over six years of public outreach, and I really want to thank the East Bronx community for their collaboration. And we were thrilled with the plan recently, received support from the community boards nine and 11, and we look forward to continuing important conversations through public view. Finally, if you wouldn't be here to talk about this plan, would that you, for President Gibson, thank you for your leadership, and Bronx members, Salalaka, Fariah, Rodney, and Marano, thank you all for your partnership, for your time today. And for President, I really appreciate the opportunity to jump in, and to my team, thank you for today. Anything else today?
Thank you so much, Chair Dan Garotnick. To you and the team at DCP, thank you for making sure that you hear us in the Bronx when it comes to major capital proposals such as the Metro North. We know that it is going to be transformative, and the most important part of this process is community engagement. So there are a lot of different organizations and stakeholders, and many of our civic groups, our small businesses and leaders, they really have been a part of the engagement process. So I do want to thank many of our partners, both medical institutions, the economic development organizations, our community boards, our educational institutions, including our colleges at Mercy University and Albert Einstein College of Medicine, many of our residential management organizations, including River Bay Management and Co-op City and Parkchester, as well as many of our neighborhood partners, the Allerton Avenue Homeowners, Morris Park Community Association, the East Bronx History Community, Van Ness Community, as well as those that really chimed in. This is, as you said, Chair, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that we do not want to pass us by, but I also think that details are very important, and that's why today's hearing is really an opportunity for all of the members of the public to hear the testimony from DCP on the details. The devil is always in the details, and details matter. So it's really important that all of you are here in person and virtually. So thank you again, Chair Garotnick, to you and the team. We look forward to working with you. Thank you so much for joining us today. So as it was... Thank you. So as it was mentioned by the team here in the Bronx, Michael and Paul, we are currently in the public review process since the certification of the Metro North proposal. The community boards had 60 days to weigh in, which has commenced, and now we are here at the Office of the Bronx Borough President. We will also engage with Borough Board, all of our leadership here in the Bronx, and then following our 30 days, of which we have an opportunity to get all of your feedback, all of your testimony, and then we will make our recommendation, and then the plan will go to the City Planning Commission, CPC, and they will have 60 days. They also have a public hearing as well at their office, so we encourage everyone, even beyond today, you still have an opportunity to be a part of this discussion. You can testify before the City Planning Commission. They have 60 days, and that will happen in May and June of this year. And then it goes to the New York City Council, which the members of the council will have 50 days. And as we mentioned, we're working with four of our council members in the Bronx that represent the four communities, but the entire New York City Council will weigh in, including our Speaker of the Council, Adrian Adams. That will happen over a 50-day period this summer, July, and August. And then finally, it will go to the Mayor of the City of New York, who has five days to make his recommendations with a completion in August of this year. So as you can see, this process has been ongoing since the certification, and it's really an opportunity for everyone to understand the magnitude of this project. So you all heard a lot of technical terms. You heard zoning text amendment, you heard density, you heard C-81, you heard manufacturing districts, you heard R-7, R-8, R-6, a lot of different technical terms. So we are trying to simplify this process as much as we can. Essentially, what we are talking about with today's hearing are the zoning text amendments and proposals for the Morris Park and Parkchester Van Ness communities, because those two stations are not only going to get a Metro North station, but they're also going to see the housing that DCP has talked about. So with respect to the four stations, a lot of the content of today's hearing really will focus around the Morris Park and the Parkchester Van Ness communities. So it was mentioned of the units of housing and the jobs that will be promoted and supported and stabilizing the commercial community and really looking at a lot of mixed-use development. So let me just begin by saying that as a borough, we know that the Bronx is ripe for development, but we want to make sure with every development, it is responsible, it is engaging, and it provides balance. We respect the character of all of our very diverse neighborhoods. So we want to make sure in Morris Park and the Parkchester Van Ness communities that we do not lose the character of those neighborhoods. If anything, we want to make sure that these projects will add to the character of what Morris Park historically has been known for, as well as Parkchester Van Ness. So before we get to the public testimony, I have several questions for DCP, because I do realize that when you talk about raising density and raising the FAR, which is the floor-area ratio, this is going to create many, many challenges for our existing neighborhood. So what I'd like to first begin by is asking DCP, the Morris Park and Parkchester Van Ness communities today, which have a variety of commercials, small businesses, medical institutions, colleges, the Parkchester condominiums, the residents in these communities are going to feel a burden when it comes to new housing opportunities. New housing will mean traffic, people, it will mean noise, it will mean construction. So DCP's proposal of adding new housing and nearly 7,500 units of housing is quite a bit. Can you tell us what are some of the plans that you envision when it comes to addressing some of the quality-of-life concerns that residents will have on the ground? Are we working on inter-agency coordinations with other city agencies like DOT, like SBS, like HPD, like the Department of Health? Are we working with other agencies to make sure that any proposal before the Parkchester Van Ness and Morris Park community does not create a further burden on the existing residents today before we add several thousand new residents and families?
Thank you for that question. So that's a great question, and you're absolutely correct. Sorry, let me move this a little bit closer. The company density is really important, and we are working with all of our sister agencies on looking at making improvements to some existing conditions, but also thinking about future conditions. So you mentioned some of the agencies. So we're working collaboratively with the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, Department of Transportation, the Parks Department, DEP, Small Business Services, the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce Development. That's just to name a few. So we are looking at a suite of capital improvements to complement the proposed density at both the Morris Park and the Parkchester Van Ness stations. I would also just like to note, even though we're not proposing land use changes at Co-op City and at Hunts Point, we're also looking at capital improvements at those stations as well.
Okay. I'm glad you mentioned that, because I think capital improvements are great, and I know what's already on the table in terms of job centers and focusing on workforce development, union jobs are great, but let me acknowledge that these are things that we needed well before a Metro North proposal. So when you talk about transportation infrastructure, fixing our streets, giving us pedestrian plazas, keeping pedestrians and cyclists and, you know, residents safe, that should be and is an ongoing conversation. So I don't want the residents of these communities to feel that you're only getting new capital improvements because of a proposal. These are things that should have been on the table for quite some time. So it's my goal and our goal to make sure that we add as much capital investment in these neighborhoods as we rightfully deserve. There is no way that we entertain new housing for our communities without new school seats. That has to happen. When we talk about overcrowding in our public schools, we're seeing that in parts of our borough. So when we talk about new school seats, working with New York City Public Schools and the School Construction Authority, that is non-negotiable. We need schools, and we need more school seats. And we also need to make sure that we're providing opportunities for our youngest of scholars, and that means universal pre-K, that means 3K seats, and that means early childcare. It is so important because we hear from parents all the time about the challenges of affording early childcare for their children. And we have to make sure that with new development comes new opportunities and new school seats and new early childcare seats. So while I know that right now there is no defined number in terms of the capital commitments across all four stations, we want to make sure that when it comes to the new school seats, the job training center, workforce development, those are things that are on the table. I also know that with all of our children, guess what we need? Recreation. We need recreation spaces like community centers. We do not build enough community centers in this city, and certainly not enough in our borough. We have been blessed with YMCA, with Kipps Bay, with Madison Square Boys and Girls Club. We have the new site at La Central in the South Bronx, the Northeast Bronx YMCA. the Northeast Bronx YMCA. But we still have neighborhoods in the Bronx that are deserts when it comes to community spaces. So I also am adding that on the table, because we need to make sure that as much that can be on the table is. Because if we are adding thousands of units of affordable housing for future residents and future families of our borough, we need to always make sure that we take care of home first. And so that is something that our council members have raised, and I am raising, and you all are going to raise as well. Because it's really important to make sure that we're looking at emerging jobs, emerging careers. I'm so grateful that DCP mentioned the potential Bronx STEAM Center. We don't have a STEAM Center in the Bronx. There's one in Brooklyn and no other place. And STEAM, as many of you know, is science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And we want to make sure that we focus on life sciences, research, and healthcare professions. We are surrounded in the Morris Park community by all of our healthcare partners and educational institutions, from Jacoby to Calvary to Montefiore-Einstein, the Albert Einstein College of Medicine. We have Mercy. We want to make sure that we're tapping into these industries so we're connecting scholars with future jobs and career pathways. There is a difference between a job and a career. And we want to orient young people and scholars with career pathways. So these are things that we need, all of you, to understand are important for your children and for all of our families that will come into our communities. So again, while I know there's no specific dollar figure, is it the expectation for us that the city will make a significant amount of capital commitments for us in the East Bronx over our four neighborhoods? Okay. And the capital commitments, at what point of this public review process would the capital commitments be outlined and secured? Because all of those capital commitments have a dollar figure, and that means money, and that means budget. So I do want to make sure that we're in the middle of our budget season now for FY '25. So are these capital commitments something that we should anticipate in this fiscal year or future fiscal years?
So I can't speak to the fiscal year specifically, but I will say that we are still in the process of identifying all the capital improvements. One of the things that's been really important and illustrative for us has been input from the community board. So we continue to add things to the list of capital investments, and we're working with the Budget Office and with City Hall figuring out like what that suite of capital improvements would be. And we anticipate probably closer to the end of the process, when we've had a chance to hear all the public testimony, hear all the needs that have been addressed, and then also working collaboratively with all the elected officials on figuring out what that final suite and package of improvements would be.
Okay. When it comes to the housing, I know that we're looking to raise the density in both Morris Park and Parkchester-Van Ness. Are we paying attention to the existing housing infrastructure that we have today? And what is some of the logic and thought that is behind the density and raising of the FAR? The concern for Parkchester is the residents of the Parkchester condominiums today understand what is happening, understand the Metro North is coming. I think many are supportive. But I think the challenge that we face is making sure that we maintain the character of the Parkchester-Van Ness neighborhoods, also bringing in new housing, but also at a scale that does not exceed what Parkchester looks like today in terms of height and square footage, and also some of the parking concerns that have been raised multiple times during this public review process when it comes to commuters that will come into Parkchester, park their vehicle, and then get on the Metro North. So how are we going to address all of that? And what is some of the ideas that came behind the FAR increases that you all are proposing?
Sure. I'll start, and I'll encourage Paul to jump in as needed. So I'll just kind of step back in the general logic throughout the rezoning area and the thinking there. We certainly heard a lot over the years from Community Board 11, for instance, Van Ness Neighborhood and others about the adjacencies and concerns about scale. So as a general rule, we sought to concentrate densities closest to the stations. At Morris Park, you can see that where we had less concern immediately adjacent to the station, since it's got rather large institutional campuses just to the west, as well as, you know, large institutional area within the Hutchinson Metro Center to the east. Elsewhere, as a general rule, when we were looking at some of the R4 communities, for instance, that we see as you go up into Van Ness and those areas, we were looking for an adjacency that we thought was a good balance. It was appropriate in density. It allowed for some growth. Also allowed us to accomplish an important city goal, which was the mapping of mandatory inclusionary housing. So we really needed an R6 for that. And so generally, where we were encountering the R4s as a general rule, we kind of looked at the R6 there as a sort of transitional area. And in a couple of places, even did different flavors of the R6. So along Baker, we did an R6A, which is more contextual there to get something that we felt would be more appropriate. In terms of the density at Parkchester and some of those questions, it gets a little complicated. We had a somewhat awkward site that faces East Tremont. It's immediately across from the station. It was a site that seemed to make sense in terms of both activating East Tremont Ave, so allowing for some activity along the frontage there, but also potentially improving connections to and from East Tremont Ave. You know, the site today, we have a provision that would sort of switch the special districts there. It's not allowed to be residential. It's just not something that could develop there. And, you know, we were looking for what we thought was a balance that would allow for some additional density there. We certainly have heard a lot about this from both ways over the years, I'll just say that. And anyone that's been at our public meetings knows that, and certainly our scoping hearing about a year ago knows that we heard quite a bit in both directions, need to go up, need to go down. And so we were always sort of playing a balancing act with that. In terms of the parking rules, and I'll encourage Paul to jump into if he wants, there is, well, you know, we're doing a few things. One, we felt it was important, since we were going out ahead of the City of Yes text amendments, that we be transparent about how those might affect our proposal. So we've effectively integrated those changes into our proposal. So our proposal does reflect what those would be. And so you see that in parking. You also see it in the FARs. And so, you know, those changes that would come with City of Yes for housing opportunity are also anticipated, not in all districts, because not all districts would that apply, you know? So the R8, for instance, is a district. I don't believe that applies, and/or the R73 on the Bronxdale site, just because of the ways those were being mapped through that proposal. I do want to note, we get the question a lot about the parking and the coming into the neighborhood and the parking, and trying to balance, you know, the need for housing versus the need for parking, knowing that sometimes the cost of parking can be prohibitive in providing housing. So we do have a special provision that I think gets lost a little bit in the special district text, which is essentially, if a development team were to build parking, and we do anticipate that many development teams will choose to build more parking than would be required, because we do see this elsewhere. But we have a provision that essentially doesn't penalize them if their residents aren't using the parking. It allows them to do shared parking. They have to render that space back to a resident should a resident decide they want it at a future point. But it allows for some flexibility in those areas around the stations, and that's new. That's a provision of the special district text that we have. I don't know if Paul has anything he wants to add to that.
Yeah, I would just add, you know, we've heard a lot about parking. And I think, as Michael mentioned, we want to prioritize the creation and development of housing, and particularly affordable housing. And parking is expensive. So while we're moving away from parking minimums, we're not precluding developers from providing parking. And, you know, we've had conversations with some of the large-site developers, and we do feel like their plans for the future would include a significant amount of parking on their site.
Okay. And I realize that in the context of talking about the Metro North expansion, we're also talking about parking. And that's just simply because parking is a challenge, and we've reduced the requirements with MIH-ZQA over the years and just a lot of new provisions, because the goal is to encourage residents to use other modes of transportation. But I do recognize today that it's hard. If you live in Parkchester, it's hard to park now. And the concern is that it will be much worse with the installation of the Metro North station. And so that has to be recognized. I think if you look at other opportunities, many council members have talked about residential parking permit systems in the City of New York. So I think we have to look at everything. Nothing should be off the table just because we want to make sure that the Parkchester community does not feel that their quality of life is now disrupted. We want them to feel that this is activating spaces that need that activation. It's looking at more mixed use from commercial to residential. And it's also maintaining the character of neighborhoods. So just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. I agree with the balance when it comes to maximizing residential FAR. Height is a big deal. Many communities don't always embrace height. And I know that we are in a homelessness crisis now across the city and across the state of New York. But that doesn't mean that the Bronx has to shoulder the full burden. And we're not. We're going to do our part as we always have. But I think it's with engagement, and it really comes with really responsibility. So I want to be very mindful of some of the height footage on many of the buildings that we are talking about. So let me ask a question specifically about the 1601 Bronxdale site that was in the PowerPoint. This is the site that's immediately north of the Parkchester station, recognizing it's privately owned, but very important as potential future development, as it would create some sort of an access or connection point for Van Ness, potentially cutting time when pedestrians need to get to the station and commuters. Do we have plans for the 1601 Bronxdale site? I know that we're looking at special district requirements that would really provide some sort of potential opportunity. But is there anything in the immediate future for the site itself?
So, oops, sorry. Thank you, Paul. Happy responding to that. So I'll just lay out quickly for everyone what's in the special district text there. So we have two actions. We have a mapping action, and then we have some special district text provisions. The mapping action, what that does is we're essentially mapping a street that would continue through the site and would go back to the area of a potential third connection to the station there. And so that will basically set that land aside. And that includes space for plaza near that potential third connection. Those, that mapping action works in conjunction with some of the special district text language. And so there's a provision for that site that if the development team in the future, the owner, were to develop the site, and they were to provide the space as laid out in the special district text, this means they have to provide a plaza near the new station. It also includes provision of an entry plaza. It includes improvements to the street going back to the station, then they would be eligible for a bonus on the site that incentivizes that development. There are some provisions that allow them to shift things. We would like them, anyone that would develop it in the future, to shift density away from the Bronxdale edge, which gets you closer, you know, to the neighborhoods over there and Fowler, where it drops quite a bit, to make it a little more sensitive. So we've provided flexibility that allows for the shifting of that. But in the short term, the site is in industrial use. We mapped the M101A for a reason. We didn't want to sort of render that use ineffective for the time being. And so we imagine, and we believe that over time, it is a good site to transition into a mixed-use site. But in the short term, it will continue as far as we know under its current use.
Okay. Any plans for us to purchase? Just asking. Purchase the what? Is it still going to be privately owned?
I think as far as we know, yeah.
Okay. Just a question. Are you able to expand a little bit on the Morris Park Plaza, if you can go back to that slide? And the Marconi Street widening that's being proposed as well? I'm assuming connecting us to Pelham Parkway, and also the Union Port Road de-mapping as well?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So I'll start with the plaza. I don't know if anyone else is seeing the slides, but I'll just speak to it. I think they're going here in the room, so I'll just give it a moment. Yes, it's, apologies. Thank you, Jotun. Great, thank you. Next slide, please. Yeah, perfect. So here with the Morris Park Plaza, so I'll just start with a little bit of history, because Paul and others noted the, and Chair Garadnik noted the long history of the study. This is a proposal that came out of the public process in 2018. We were having conversations. Someone proposed, we look into the idea of a plaza. And it sort of has developed over the years as such. I just want to note that, like, a lot of the good ideas are not our ideas, and that's part of the planning process. The plaza here essentially is you have a portion of Morris Park Ave between East Chester Road and Bassett Ave. And for a couple of reasons, it became clear that the plaza idea was a really good idea. One, because there's just not a lot of open space in this area, and there's a need for that. There's a need for places for people to congregate around, you know, in the neighborhood in different areas. And the station will be right there. There's another reason why the plaza becomes important in that the station, as designed, will get a little lost. It'll be behind an existing building, for instance, there. And we were concerned about that. This is an opportunity to make sure these stations are visible and easily accessible. And so we became concerned about that. So the proposal that developed over the years is sort of twofold. We have a mapping action that maps a sort of a triangular property on the corner there that would provide for visibility towards the station, while also augmenting the size of the plaza. And then the second portion is, the proposal is for the portion of the roadbed of Morris Park Ave, over the long term, it wouldn't happen in the short term. But over the long term, for that to be turned into a plaza space. So those going to and from the station to the major institutional campuses to the west would have that, both the open space but the easier connection there as well. And so I don't know if there are more specific questions about the plaza, but that is the thinking we've been working with DOT over the years. This would, in our understanding, be eventually a DOT-run plaza program. There are lots of things that need to be worked out as part of that. But we've studied it as part of our environmental review. We see that it actually, as far as we can see in the environmental review, it actually improves circulation around the station when we assume the new station in the future. And so we're very optimistic about this.
So will DOT have a portion of the capital when it comes to pedestrian plazas and some of the streetscape work that we know is necessary?
Yeah, we are definitely proposing monies for DOT, yeah.
And then, are we currently having conversations now with Small Business Services around workforce development and training for local hiring provisions, MWBE priorities? Are we entertaining those conversations at this point?
Yeah. So we, as I mentioned earlier, so we're working with the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce Development. But to your point, SBS is included on that list of partners that we want to engage with. One of the things that we've heard loud and clear just through the community board process is it is really important to have support for small businesses. So we've certainly flagged that, So we've certainly flagged that, and we'll continue to work with them to figure out what is included in sort of the final suite of, you know, improvements, probably more on the expense side, but to support small businesses in the areas.
Okay. And recognizing the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce and what they have already been doing, a lot of workforce training with stakeholders, New York City jobs, job skills, I can think of many other apprenticeship opportunities, hard hats to helmets, non-traditional employment for women, pathways to apprenticeship. We want to make sure that there are pipelines, also engaging the commercial districts, the Morris Park, Business Improvement District, many of our small businesses that already are providing the local jobs, stimulating the economy and really making sure that they are a part of these conversations. What I would also like to see, I know the community boards have brought it up as well, we have young people that are filled with talent, and there's a vacuum when it comes to a lot of opportunities. All year round, not just the summertime, but the SYEP program that we have, 100,000 youth that have a summer youth job, but then there are also all-year-round opportunities for employment for young people. We have a Bronx Youth Council. We would love to see more youth engagement in making sure that there are internship opportunities for our young people. We should be talking, as we are, to many of our medical and healthcare institutions, SOBRO, BX-EDC, many of our partners here in the office, about those jobs for young people. So I definitely want to make sure that's on the table with SBS and with the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce. There should be new stone unturned when it comes to jobs and programs that really create generational wealth and stimulate our economy. So I want to make sure that DCP is aware, and that is a priority for all of us.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm going to shoot back later with more questions throughout the morning, but I do want to make sure we get to the members of the public, all of you who are here, as well as online. And I know we have our council members and their representatives who will also provide testimony. So let me say thank you, DCP, and we'll continue with the hearing. Thank you.
Great, thank you all. So, and I also want to recognize that online, some people are having some audio issues hearing. The, I just want to note that this will be posted so that you can all have access to the public hearing later. So we will now turn it over to the public testimony phase. We will first invite the elected officials, if there are any present. I believe that Randy Malman, Representative for Councilmember Farius, is on, if you'd like to unmute and speak.
Thank you.
Oh, and just to note, the elected officials are not under the two-minute requirement.
Great, thank you. Good morning, my name is Randy Malman, Chief of Staff, Majority Leader Amanda Farius, representing District 18 in the Bronx. I deliver the following statement on behalf of the council member. Thank you to Bronx Borough President Vanessa Gibson for hosting today's public hearing on the Bronx Metro North stations. The new Bronx Metro North stations are a huge undertaking for communities across the Bronx, but this project brings an enormous amount of opportunity. We have the potential to employ thousands of Bronx sites locally, create new commuting options that will significantly decrease travel times with direct access to Penn Station, provide more community and green spaces, bolster economic development in small businesses, and build a new affordable housing. My office has worked tirelessly alongside the Borough President, my council colleagues, our council land use division, and the Department of City Planning to engage with community members on what this project means for them and how it can transform our neighborhoods. We hosted multiple community engagement sessions to ensure that this process is as transparent as possible and that our constituents play an active role in shaping what this project will look like. The invaluable feedback provided by community members has helped shape the application we are hearing today. Modifications made to this application for the Parkchester Station were a direct result of the conversations I had with members of the public who I am fortunate enough to represent. My community expressed to me their concerns around the size and height of the proposed buildings, and my office worked with DCP to make sure the zoning changes addressed their concerns. When this project first came to my desk, I promised to bring my community in on the decision-making, and I believe that we have done just that. I would like to thank all the residents of Council District 18 who participated in our engagement sessions for making sure their voices were heard and for being a part of this process. The Bronx Metro North project will have a long and lasting impact on this borough, and it is so important that we continue our efforts to keep the community engaged every step of the way. I am proud of the work we have done so far, and I look forward to continuing that work in coordination with my neighbors and my colleagues in government to ensure the Bronx Metro North plan meets the needs of my district and the Bronx as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials or representatives that would speak? Not seeing any at this time. So we will then turn it over, oh, was there one? We'll now turn it over to public testimony in the room. The first speaker will be Michael Cass. You'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Michael Cass, and I'm a resident in Morris Park. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of the Bronx Metro North Station area rezoning. I'm proud to say that I participated in nearly every public workshop related to this proposal since 2018, and I know city planners have been listening because I can see my own ideas in this plan. After six years of engagement, the plan presented today represents a compromise. The plan provides, to quote city planners, "a balance between allowing additional densities, especially near the new train stations at Parkchester, Van Ness, and Morris Park, while respecting and responding to the existing densities and context of the surrounding residential neighborhoods." That's exactly what this plan does, and with the housing crisis and the opportunity before us, a multi-billion-dollar transportation investment in the Bronx, it would be a mistake to compromise any further on zoning capacity. I would second a recommendation made by Community Board Nine to increase zoning density and height. They recognize that increasing density makes it viable for developments to accomplish community needs, especially affordable housing. And we hear it from our seniors, our veterans, our Jacoby residents, how difficult it is to find affordable housing in our neighborhood. We can build housing for everyone, but we need to zone for it. Now, I understand there are some concerns about infrastructure and other needs, but we know the investment won't stop with the Metro North. For example, there were concerns about flooding. Just last week, DEP announced that Morris Park and Parkchester would be one of four locations citywide to receive a Cloud Burst Hub pilot project, which has some overlap with the study area and will reduce flooding. The point is, our community's future is being invested in improving our quality of life. The biggest risk facing our community is that we fail to build enough housing, and as a parent, I want my kids to be able to afford to stay in our neighborhood when they grow up. That will only be possible if we build, and thousands of homes are on the line. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Michael Garcia, followed by Bernadette Farrar.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to say that the Bronx, you know, we deal with a lot of problems, we deal with every problem, every hardship. It's important that all of our public spaces that we work on include a lot of plants and flowers and a lot of green, beautiful spaces, shaded areas. And with this development, I hope we, you know, that we're thinking about that with this really big thing that we're doing here. And thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Bernadette Farrar, followed by Marshall Strawbridge. I'd also ask that you hold the additional microphone up as well. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Vanessa Gibson, City Planning, and members of this public hearing. My name is Bernadette Farrar, and while I am Chair of Community Board 11 and President of the Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance, today I speak as a lifelong Bronx resident living in the neighborhood of Van Ness, one of the oldest neighborhoods in the Northeast Bronx, dating back to 1893, when the Morris Park racetrack began in 1889 to 1903. One of the largest sites is number 4025, Baker Avenue. 398 residential apartments or 1,500-plus new residents being built across the street from two family homes on a narrow street without adequate parking. This development must not be zoned more than R5B, or it will have a significant adverse impact on our community. Sites 3925, 3926, 3927 may serve as much-needed senior and veteran housings with R5, R5B, or R6 zoning. Site 3952 is located in a crucial high-traffic intersection with close proximity to the Parkchester Van Ness Station and should house a high-quality supermarket and a youth center. Site 4042's scope of work will eviscerate the sightline of St. Raymond's Church from Bronxdale Avenue. Project sites at Eastchester Road and Morris Park Avenue will overwhelm an already well-developed location. This area would be better served with a much-needed trade or middle school or supermarket. MTA must have more security for evening and late-night travelers. Cameras are not enough. Jit needs to transport commuters to local subway stations, drop-off points would provide increased safety, efficiency, and reduced traffic. City Planning and MTA must partner with local parking garages next to the train stations for multi-level parking with discounted parking for commuters. The Van Ness and Morris Park communities request written agreement that states, as negotiations develop, that Bronx Community Board 11 and City Council Member Kristi Mamarotto be notified to discuss the community's list of amenities as part of the initial blueprint process as we move together to a prosperous and brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Marshall Strawbridge, followed by Carl Johnson.
Good morning, and thank you, Borough President, Department of City Planning. My name is Marshall Strawbridge. I'm here on behalf of the Bronx Economic Development Corporation to express our support for this proposal. The rezoning proposals for Morris Park and Van Ness come in anticipation of two of the largest transportation investments in the history of our borough. The neighborhoods in which they are sited and the proposed zoning changes will maximize the economic benefit to the surrounding communities and the borough as a whole. By allowing more residential density and commercial uses in these neighborhoods, we will be laying the foundation for two transformative transit-oriented developments. In two communities that are currently underdeveloped and lack the commercial space and housing needed to accommodate the growth that's going to come as a result of these projects, the allowance of the development of more commercial spaces and the allowance of more diverse uses of the commercial spaces will provide the necessary foundation to grow the Bronx's small business community by nurturing development of a vibrant commercial corridor, create jobs, drive innovation, and create high-paying jobs in in-demand sectors. I believe this proposal is timely and forward-thinking, and will have a positive impact on the Bronx's economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Johnson. And the next speaker will be Robert Press, who is online.
Good morning, Borough President Gibson and other elected officials. My name is Carl Johnson, and today I'm not here to speak as a Bronx resident. Though I'm born and raised here and have spent the vast majority of my life here, I'm here to speak on behalf of the New York City Building Trades, where we have roughly 17,000 members who live and work here in the Bronx. I want to congratulate you all for this project. This is long overdue, and as Borough President Gibson stated, for the longest time, the Bronx has been a transportation desert, and these four train stations will go a long way to correcting that. I'm glad to see that not only do we have foresight in this area, I'm glad to see that everything is just coming together the way that it should be. Again, as I said, what these train stations will also allow to happen is they'll also allow the people who are working on them to have a career path that would lead to the middle class. So again, this is something that's long overdue, and I can't thank you enough, not only as a former Bronx resident, but also as someone who has many members that live here and work here. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. So the next speaker will be Robert Press, followed by David Karnofsky, and then Elizabeth Denny's, all of which are online.
Thank you, Borough President Gibson, for this opportunity to speak. This Metro North rezoning is not about the new stations, but about an opportunity to build massive housing in the East Bronx. City Planning has already incorporated the City of Yes for Economic Development in the buildings by a station at Morris Park before the city council vote, and has incorporated the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity by adding the 20% bonus site bump up, again, before the city council votes later this year, as was said by Bronx City Planning Representative Paul Phillips at the Bronx delegation City of Yes meeting. City Planning did not disclose this to the Bronx community boards, and they gave their approval for Board 911 based on false information that was given to them. When the Metro North planning began in 2018, there was no mention of any housing at all. Then in about 2023, 6,000 units were added, and now it's 7,500 units that will end home ownership in Van Ness and Morris Park as high-rise apartment buildings will replace already existing homes as they have in other parts of the Bronx. Once one building is built of a height, other similar height buildings are built because they are not, no longer out of context anymore. As for the 1,900 permanently affordable homes, they are for only 30 years and are not rent regulated, as you have seen how high affordable rents are going for in the Bronx Borough President Gibson. There has been also no mention of the service schedule or the cost of the Metro North project. Having lived in Riverdale for over 30 years and using the Metro North Hudson Line, I used it only maybe once every other year because it was very expensive. I used the subway. It was a better option, better service, and much cheaper. Borough President Gibson, I ask you to reject this City Planning proposal because it has left out many important details to you and your community boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be David Karnofsky.
Good morning, Borough President. My name is David Karnofsky, I'm with Water and Fish, American Land Use Council, to the owner of the site located at 1601 Rocksville Avenue. Here today to testify on behalf of the owner in support of City Planning's zoning initiative, and in particular, of the zoning changes proposed for the 1601 Bronxville site. The site is large, it's got 7.78 acres, 7.7. It's bounded by the Rocksville Avenue to the east, right to the south, and contented property to the west and north. It's comprised by a large warehouse, something that houses active commercial use. City Planning therefore describes this site as a special site to indicate that with these active uses there today, the site's likely to be developed over the long run. Under City Planning's proposed rezoning, the site will transform into a new transit-oriented neighborhood. The proposal includes the map of a 90-foot-wide landscaped public street called Pierce Avenue Extension that would run from Rocksville Avenue into the interior of the site. Into this first block of the avenue, there would be five public open spaces, seating, trees, plantings, and other amenities. The site would also add up to 100,000 square feet of lawyer available for a new public school. The site is configured in a way that can accommodate density. It is adjacent to the new station, but buffered from the surrounding community. The smallest building would run on Rocksville Avenue, and the largest would be located in the northwest corner of the site, adjacent to the commonment facility at a distance from the residential neighborhood. Altogether, this council here will up to approximately 2,000 housing units, with hundreds of the 40 units provided out of the MIA program. The exact numbers of units should of course depend on the mix of units cited. Finding site's location close proximity to the new Metro North station platform provides an opportunity to build an elevated public, best-of-bet, public, pedestrian walkway connecting the terminus of Pierce Avenue Extension to the platform, and that amenity that will be available for use by the community at heart. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Elizabeth Denny's.
Hello, thank you to the Borough President for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Elizabeth Denny's, and I'm a board member of Open New York, a nonprofit organization that advocates for that which we are first badly needed in New York City and throughout New York State. I'm speaking today in favor of this rezoning is currently drafted because the new Metro North station in the Bronx presents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to build many new homes in vibrant mixed-use communities near transit. These communities would have excellent access to the Job Center in Morris Park and Hunts Point, and in addition to that, the new rail stations will provide excellent access to Manhattan's job market, as well as convenient access to Connecticut and the entire Northeast corridor. I'm very excited that the city is taking the initiative to rezone this area now to make sure that there are additional housing, retail, and commercial opportunities that will be ready when the new stations are open in 2027. This sensible rail-oriented development has been the backbone of New York City for 100 years, and allowing New Yorkers access to jobs in wonderful, vibrant, mixed-use communities without the additional expense of having to own a car, or if you have a car, not having to use it every day. And the city's current proposals will bring all of those types of mixed-use development to these areas, areas that have long-needed additional investment. I'm really especially excited that the current plan is an expansion of the original proposal, allowing it to bring even more affordable housing, retail, and commercial to the rezoning area. New York City is in a housing crisis, and every additional home and affordable home we build is so badly needed to make sure that Bronx residents and New Yorkers are able to live here and stay here in their communities. This is a really smart plan, and I want to encourage the Borough President to support the rezoning is currently drafted. Thank you again so much for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. Brett Buer, followed by Pedro Correia.
My name is Brett Buer, Representative of Parkchester Preservation Corporation. We have owned the two garages on the south side of East Tremont Avenue at the north end of the Parkchester neighborhood for the past 25 years. This site is directly across from the planned station. We believe the Bronx Metro North rezoning is a positive step towards achieving several longstanding community and citywide goals, and we thank the Borough President for her commitment to this process. Based on comments we have heard during the community planning process and subsequent stakeholder conversations, we've been discussing further changes to the zoning text at our site focused on greater affordability, parking and connectivity, and street activation, all of which would require greater height. These sites are occupied by a garage and office building, both of which are aging buildings whose designs block off East Tremont from the Parkchester community. At the center of this site is Parkchester's heating plant, which is owned by the Condominium Association. Our objectives are to generate ample parking for building residents, Parkchester residents, and train station users, significant amounts of affordable housing, retail and community facility space. facility space, and improved connectivity between East Tremont Avenue and the Parkchester community. However, to achieve all of these objectives, we need increased building height. By obtaining additional height while remaining in context with the existing heating plant, we will meet the goals of the rezoning while reinventing a multi-block stretch of Tremont Avenue that is currently dormant and unsafe and which disconnects the community from the new station. Both Parkchester condo boards are supportive of our effort, and Bronx C V Nine's positive resolution recommends increasing height to create opportunities--
Thank you for your testimony.
--to accomplish community heat. We are working with city planning--
Brett, thank you, thank you for your testimony. You can submit any written testimony--
--and any planned additional meetings with the community to demonstrate the benefits of our vision--
Gio, if you can mute.
--for the Borough President's support of the--
Thank you for your testimony. We will ask for two minutes, and any written testimony can be submitted. The next speaker is, that was just, all right, so Pedro Corio, followed by Megan Wiley.
Thank you Borough President. My name is Pedro Corio of the Muram Group. My firm represents Parkchester Preservation Corporation, which you just heard from, regarding nineteen ninety and twenty forty East Tremont Avenue. I would like to share language from two letters in support of the overall rezoning, but which express concerns that the proposed zoning for these Tremont sites will not advance the goals of the rezoning and provide benefits to the community. The letters are from the Parkchester South condo and Parkchester North condo boards of managers, together representing over twelve thousand apartment units. These letters are the result of outreach Parkchester Preservation has conducted and will continue to pursue in partnership with Majority Leader Farias and other stakeholders, such as yourself. The following are some excerpts from the letter. The boards have reviewed plans prepared by Parkchester Preservation for two new buildings, which provide significant affordable and market-rate housing, retail, and community facilities, ample parking, and improved connectivity between the neighborhood and the station. We write to express our concern that the current zoning would not achieve the goals we note above. The Parkchester North and South condos support P P C's proposal to develop a significant amount of housing. As it relates to Parkchester Preservation's development project, we are particularly supportive of the inclusion of ample parking at the base of either one or both towers. Additionally, it is the strong opinion of the board that the planned transit improvements along East Tremont Avenue must be connected to the community. We believe this will only be achieved by allowing greater height at the site. We believe that Parkchester Preservation's projects and the Bronx Metro North rezoning are monumental steps towards addressing the future health and prosperity of our neighborhood, and we are confident that the proposed project aligns with our shared vision, which would support a more inclusive and sustainable neighborhood. The letters will be submitted to you in writing for your consideration. Thank you again.
Thank you, Pedro. Next speaker is Megan Wiley, followed by Dr. Camila Teples.
Thank you, everyone. Good morning. My name is Megan Wiley, and I'm the Director of Government Relations for the New York Building Congress. The Building Congress represents over five hundred constituent organizations and over two hundred fifty thousand skilled tradespeople and professionals dedicated to the growth and prosperity of our city. Today, I am proud to express our support for this proposal that will bring much-needed transit-oriented development and thousands of critical jobs to one of the most under-resourced neighborhoods in New York City. As a longtime partner of the public and private groups committed to getting New Yorkers back to work, restarting our economy, and building for the future, the Building Congress strongly encourages the Borough President to approve the City of Yes for Bronx Metronorming reform. With the development of new Metro North stations in Morris Park and Parkchester, and soon Co-op City in Hunts Point, this imperative that we make sure the area is prepared to meet the needs of the growing commuter base. Not only would this plan create a livable, walkable neighborhood with funding for improved infrastructure, an estimated six thousand new homes, and quick access to over a million jobs in under forty-five minutes, but it would also generate ten thousand jobs and workforce training opportunities for Bronx residents. The Bronx Metro North Plan is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to support the entire borough of the Bronx by encouraging sustainable transportation options for commuters, incentivizing much-needed affordable housing, promoting neighborhood retail to help build up local economies, and creating thousands of good-paying job opportunities for residents to live and work in their own communities. As an organization with a vigorous membership base ready, willing, and able to build New York into an even better place to live and work, the Building Congress strongly stands in support of this proposal and the positive impact it will have for the entire borough of the Bronx and New York City as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dr. Camila Teples, followed by a phone number that ends in six zero.
Good morning. My name is Camelia Tepelus, and I testify as Executive Director of the Morris Park Business Improvement District, operating along the Morris Park Avenue Commercial Corridor all the way to Williams Bridge Road, about seven blocks away from the future Metro North Morris Park Station. We congratulate the Bronx Borough President, the D C P team, and all stakeholders that worked so hard to bring this project forward up to this point. The four standing four Metro North stations represent a long-overdue opportunity to remediate an unfair, inequitable status quo. Trains passing through East Bronx for decades without actually serving our neighborhoods will now finally be able to stop and serve our local communities, connecting people to jobs and future opportunities. While the Morris Park bid strongly welcomes this transformative development, it is crucial that the new stations integrate smoothly and positively with their surrounding neighborhoods, and the future management needs of all stations and the new public spaces around them is being addressed early on. Of specific relevance to us is the management of the future Morris Park Plaza adjacent to the new station, which will see hundreds of commuters passing through to access local jobs at the large healthcare facilities nearby. Who will be responsible for the management and cleanliness of this new public space? Who will sweep the sidewalks, empty the trash receptacles? Who will install and maintain planters? Who will take responsibility that this plaza is a welcoming entrance gate into the beautiful Morris Park community? The Bronx is packed with plazas that nobody cares for, are littered with trash, syringes, and unused needles. We hope that the Morris Park Plaza will not be one of these. The future Morris Park Plaza maintenance must be funded. Plaza sanitation and beautification costs need to be included in the budget of a large institutional shareholder or consortium of stakeholders, sorry, upon the opening of the Morris Park Metro North Station and year after, and year after year thereafter. Large private stakeholders, no wonder if you're in the small development group, as well as the city-owned Jacoby Hospital, will benefit tremendously from the new Metro North access and the rezoning associated with it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Morris Park bid for this whole entity surrounding the station, yes, I'm just finishing this sentence, to take ownership and ensuring that the future plaza is a welcoming, careful point of access into Morris Park. We really thank all the entities--
Thank you for your testimony. You can submit any additional written testimony online. Thank you. So the next is a online number which ends in six zero. You can press six star six in order to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
I can hear you.
Yeah, if you could also identify yourself. Thank you.
Oh, my name is Benny Lexler.
Could you say it one more time?
Benny Lexler.
Okay. Begin when you--
Can you hear me?
Black屏.
Okay, thank you. I just want to congratulate the Bronx Borough President on her efforts in this area and express my support for the implementation of zoning, which would allow for more mixed-income and dense construction in the area surrounding the New Metro North Station. New York is in, as many of the speakers before we have said, a very serious housing crisis with a need for creative neighborhood planning that would allow for new construction of both market rate and affordable housing, and doing it in the vicinity of our rail network, which would allow for less traffic and more environmentally sustainable neighborhood is a win for the entire city. So I would strongly encourage the Borough President to make good on those commitments and to put forward a favorable recommendation for the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Nora Martins, or Nora Martins, followed by Matthew.
Good morning Borough President Gibson. My name is Nora Martins, from Acreman L L P, Ladies Council, to Baker Development L L C. I'm reading this testimony in support on behalf of Arjun Jushi of Baker Development L L C. Baker Development L L C is the owner of several lots within the area of the proposed Bronx Metro North Station area study, located on the block bounded by White Plains Road and Baker Avenue, just a short walk from the proposed Parkchester Van Ness Metro North Station. We strongly support city planning's Bronx Metro North Station proposal. If this proposal is approved, we plan to redevelop our property, which is currently underutilized, with a mixed-use development that includes new housing, including twenty-five to thirty percent permanently affordable housing under the mandatory residential housing program, as well as local commercial indoor community facility uses along White Plains Road. For example, we've heard that a supermarket is needed in the area, and our site is the perfect location. Given the size of the property, we'd also be able to provide green open space and a significant amount of parking. While we are still early in the design process, our strategy is to locate taller portions of the development along White Plains Road, while lower and less dense development would be situated along Baker Avenue and Garfield Street. This approach would allow for a transition from busy White Plains Road and the more built-up areas surrounding the new Metro North Station to the lower-density homes in the neighborhood to the north and the west. Redeveloping our site will require implementation of comprehensive drainage solutions, which should resolve existing drainage issues, mitigate flood concerns, and enhance overall infrastructure resilience. We've also heard the narrowness of Baker Avenue is a concern to some in the community, and will work towards solutions to that issue, together with the New York City Department of Transportation, should we proceed with our development plan. We ask that you recommend approval of the proposed Bronx Metro North Station area study, as we believe that this initiative holds tremendous potential to provide much-needed services, new housing, and economic opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matthew, followed by Grace Lavaglio.
Hi, good afternoon.
Oh, first, Matthew is, Matthew is first. Matthew?
Matthew, hi, everybody. My name is Matthew Labanka. I'm a longtime resident of Woodside, Queens, at the Boulevard Gardens. I'm also a teacher at P S one fifty-one. I'm currently calling in from my classroom. We're very excited, we're very pleased for our Bronx and our uptrend neighbors to have this opportunity, but I also want everyone listening to be made aware that this traffic will severely impact thousands of citizens living in northwest Queens near these already noisy and outdated tracks. The increased traffic, a total of a hundred and sixty trains a day, will quadruple the current train count. A petition has circulated. We're in appropriate contact with our elected officials, but we wanted to represent ourselves to our neighbors here in this forum. We're asking for noise and vibration mitigation along the tracks. The main source of the noise is two switch tracks along Fifty-Seventh Street between Thirty-first and Thirty-first Avenues. The switch tracks, which allow trains to maneuver from inbound to outbound, are already reacting very loudly to trains, and when the train load quadruples as planned, the noise level will become completely overwhelming. There is no sound barrier. We have an outdated sound study. We're hoping for track dampeners. We're hoping for transparent plexiglass barriers. We don't just want to bear the burden of this project, especially since no train station is going to be built in Queens. Currently, the transparency of the construction and improvements in Queens is very muddy. M T A and Amtrak seem to be passing responsibility to each other, leaving residents like myself and others. If we didn't this out, we just hope that the community is made aware of this and while you advocate for your quality of life, rightly so, that you will also advocate for our quality of life and not take for granted the burden of late neighbors. Please don't forget about us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Grace Lavaglio, followed by R D.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Grace Lavaglio. I am the founder and chair of the Alton Garden Block Association, living in this Alton section of the northeast Bronx. I've been a resident there. I just don't, I just don't stay in the Alton area of Morris Park. The whole, the whole northeast section is mine, if you will. After watching the presentation, and I'm looking at these slides, I thought I was looking at Manhattan. The building was outrageously too much. They're going to be taken away, or skyline, buildings, it's just going to be so inundated, and this project was not thought out carefully. The residents were told, given of bill goods, a bunch of lies about it. I totally agree with Robert Press, what he said. There are things that have been hidden, and I would urge Vanessa Gibson to vote no on this. Let me just say, the elephant in the room, you know, elections have consequences, and we know already, the people who follow politics, that Salamanca is geared to be the next B P. So if Vanessa wants to retain her seat as a Bronx Borough President, she should do what the community wants, which is not to approve this big, I don't even know what to call it. This is just another, to me, this is another way of raping the Bronx of its resources, and you have people that only even live in the area that are born to do it because there's opportunity, yes, there's opportunity for the developers and for people to get, put money in their pockets, for people like myself, like I'm a senior and disabled. It's going to be a disaster. We already are overloaded with people. Rents, we have housing. The reason rents are not affordable anymore because the city will pay three and four times what somebody would pay. So landlords will want to rent to the city and not to regular people. We're getting, we're getting pushed out of our homes. So no, this is not a good project. I would suggest that you rethink it. We don't need, we only want six-story buildings. If you're going to have to put buildings, ten, twelve, twenty stories is not acceptable. We do not accept that. That's my statement, and I hope Vanessa, that you will listen to that and think about your future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is R D, and that's the last speaker that has their hand up. If anyone else wants to put their hand up, please do now.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Thank you. My name is Roxanne Delgado. I would like to say, is this an investment in the Bronx, or is the Bronx an investment itself? Because how many times we have seen projects brought to the Bronx with saying we've addressed Knox sixty-two, job opportunity, housing opportunity, and continuously that has not turned to fruition? And now northeast side, northeast side of the Bronx where I reside, is not being looked at again with opportunities. Regarding the job opportunities, of course, the Bronx needs jobs, but I mean, look at education. Many of our children are graduating, and many of them are going to higher education, and they're graduating with very medial skills. So unfortunately, they will not be eligible or applicants for these new job opportunities. Secondly, I like how the political jar and transit desert, housing crisis, but how many times has these prices been caused by our same electives? For example, Pelham Parkway, we're not transit desert, but fortunately, the investment M T A has caused unlivables service as well as now public safety issues. And they brought the E-screws, which are now endangering pedestrians. Look at all the illegal cannabis shops we have in Pelham Parkway. The electric start problem, now they're spending all this money to educate the public that these products and illegal cannabis may be unsafe for use. Now, a housing crisis because electors take money from developers, and let's look at Twenty-Five Six to Boston Road, which the B P approved. Slave Product Group is a notorious developer that the former mayor, Bill Blas, and former Speaker Corey Johnson refused to work with him because of his predatory nature. And you open the door to him and affordability? Oh, please, people need to learn the definition of affordable. It's income restricted to thirty percent, but look at the income requirement, over a hundred thousand dollars, when the median income area of Boston Road and Alton was forty-five thousand. And, and this is a shame how, this is why I didn't even look at the Metro North E I S and E I S report, because I know all the time I devote is a waste of time. I will say, listen to the community that resides around there because they stopped labeling them as limbies or racists. These people are invested in the community, and they took the time to express concerns because they want to be part of this community. They want to remain in this community, so respect them, because I've been part of it with, helped part of my community. But it takes years and decades to build a community. It only takes one day to destroy a community, so stop destroying our communities and do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is the last speaker that has their hand up. Oh, no, Diana Finch, go ahead. We can hear you.
Hi, did you just recognize me?
Yeah, go ahead, Diana.
Okay. Thanks. My name is Diana Finch, and I live in the Bronx Park East Pelham Parkway area. One comment that I wanted to make about the height of some of the buildings that people seem so concerned about, I note that because of the way the zoning regulations work for a site such as Rocksdale, when you have considerable height, you're also required to add green spaces, and the Rocksdale East Tremont area, in fact, is one where there's currently very little, if any, green space. So I would hope that people would consider not just the height of the buildings, but everything that comes with it, and really invest in developing more green spaces, pocket parks, the plazas that the Morris Park bid mentioned. Really think-- parks, the plazas that the Morris Park bid mentioned, really think of the whole context, not just the buildings themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. So that is the last speaker that has their hand up or has signed in. If there's any other speakers, we will wait a moment. Anyone else remotely or in person that wants to speak? Seeing no hands, seeing no one ready, so, so is that, there are no additional speakers? This concludes the public testimony portion of Borough President Gibson's public hearing.